One, three. We will call this March eighteen, twenty twenty five, meeting the town council to order at seven twenty three. If you are able, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with the love of our freedom and justice. We'll call Justin. Mike Wallace. Sandra. Tammy.
Here.
John. Here. Brett Gollum is it? Randy Dagger. Present. Luther Revner. Brad Lowood is not here. Josh Noel. Present. Jamie Uslak.
Yeah.
There are nothing for public hearing, so there's nothing to sign in. We have public comment. Town council would like to let everyone know. The agenda for our meeting is available online on the town website. It's reminded before we meet to allow citizens to come speak and talk before decision is made. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available on the website before our next meeting. In order to give everyone an opportunity to speak and get through today's business, please state your name, address, and eliminate your comments to three minutes. Comments will only be allowed during the public comment section of the meeting directly after this statement is read. Welcome everybody. Is there anybody who has a public comment? Anyone with public comment? Anyone with public comment? The record show a call for three times for a public comment. We have in front of us the February workshop minutes along with February council minutes. Everyone has had an opportunity to review those. I will entertain motion. The group.
Make a motion. We approve February workshop and February council minutes.
Justin Albright has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Justin made a motion. Tammy Gridditch just made a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Five vote. Unanimous consent vote. We will be looking at resolutions and ordinances to follow. So we got everybody present. I will entertain this idea of a unanimous consent vote that will allow us to push through those ordinances and resolutions that are able to be done. So. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to. Use unanimous consent vote on our ordinances, resolutions as listed on the agenda.
Mike Wallace has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second though.
Andres has made the a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Five vote. First one that we have in front of us is. Transfer resolution twenty twenty five dash zero three dash eighteen. This is a resolution providing for the transfer appropriations for the town of Hubert, Florida County, Indiana, for twenty twenty five under the action of passage by the Hubert Town Council. Which serve to IC six dash one, one point one, then eighteen point six. I'm going to skip down to the bottom as legal counsel allows us to do so. Leave the plus. Is that okay? This right?
Good.
General fund transfers. Twenty three eleven federal town professional services of five thousand three hundred and eighty dollars to line on twenty three forty one general liability insurance in the same amount. Any questions about that? Moving on to L E C E fund. From thirty four fifty one L E C E equipment and repair, four thousand thirty four dollars and eighty cents to thirty three eleven L E C E. Pro services of the same amount. Jamie, what's this for?
P L C. It's for Bane, I believe.
For the what?
For Bane.
Okay. Are you aware of the?
Yes.
Okay. I agree with this.
Yeah, but it's just moving it from one plan and L E C to another. So just same fund, just different appropriation. All right.
From the lit thirteen ninety two lit promotions, one thousand eight hundred and eighty seven dollars to buy out thirteen forty one lit liability insurance of the same amount. Jamie, what's this for?
Liability insurance came in net worth highest.
I believe I read all of them. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Thanks. Okay. Is there a motion on this resolution?
I'll make a motion when you approve resolution twenty twenty five dash zero three dash.
There is a vote. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There are motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Five vote. We have an action in front of us. Resolution twenty twenty five. Is this oh three? It's it says oh two on the cover.
Oh, three eighteen two.
It's one.
Mine is right.
Yeah, I got I have a correction of three.
Correct.
Yeah. I don't have one. Um, this is this is resolution for Park Ridge, phase two. Well, this is a resolution to approve the file detail of planning to comply at the park ridge base two. This is allowing the twenty nine lots. To be split into pair pair homes. Correct. Pair homes housing in Park Ridge, page two. Yes, sir. Yes. This is very specific to the road and to the lot numbers that are allowed. The the document will be included in the in the message. Is this enough to read through this? Or you reach the whole like? By if I remember correctly, this was.
Oh, yes. Supply commission is a favorable favorable recommendation. He was six.
There were, I want to make clear that there were a few things that needed to be changed, that the covenants needed to be updated. Those were in the record, the planning commission, correct, sir? Okay. Some of those things included the the public work aid on the street side. The fact that no op buildings were going to be allowed in the back of the minimum. Side setbacks were going to remain the same, which was a minimum of ten feet between by five on each side. Amongst the couple of others. Correct?
Exactly. Yes.
So contingent upon that is our motion to approve it. The public should go in front of the planning commission.
Uh, I guess I can tell you our charity tab character is in the process. So drafting that and it's going to record it. As soon as that's recorded, I will get that to them.
Is there a motion that on this?
I'll make a motion to accept resolution number twenty five dash zero three dash one eight dash one, Justin.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Under the motion in the second, no other further discussion. I want to add to this is that most subdivisions in the economic times in which we are at right now, we're in a little bit. Have multiple products that are in them. This is a very, very described. Amount of these pair of homes, which we found will will do pretty well. D R Horton has requested those. And it benefits the town in this way. It is going to allow us to sell more product quicker. It's going to put more people in there, which are going to help more schools or local businesses. It is also going to drive more traffic throughout the rest of the segment. Would we agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah. That's all the further discussion that I have to do. There's a motion in the second. No other further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Five. Okay. We have resolution twenty twenty five dash zero three dash one eight dash two granting council president permission to sign C C M chief paperwork. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I'm making motion to approve point five dash zero three dash eighteen dash two. Allow the president to sign with C N G.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Cami.
There being a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Five. We have ordinance twenty twenty five dash three, they have eighteen cul-de-sacs. This ordinance of the town council of Hubert, Indiana, admitting the municipal code of heading say land use article three, chapter four, section two, three. That two dash three dash four dash two A for the town of Hubert. Mike, what's the one of the particulars on this? We have. Reach the length of the cul-de-sac and five hundred feet to do dot not to exceed six hundred feet.
Oh, yes.
Go out of the sun.
Yes, must know our size.
Anything beyond a six hundred, sorry. Yeah. Anything beyond a six hundred foot is going to go to a, there must be a sign present that says no outlet or dead end.
So there won't be any maximum lengths anymore. That's odd. It's just.
Just anything beyond a six hundred foot.
Will require a sign.
That's true.
All right. Is there a motion? I should say the planning commission recommended the passing of this. Your motion.
I'll be accept twenty point five dash eighteen dash two or dash eighteen. No. Twenty twenty five dash zero three dash eighteen cul-de-sac.
I will second it, Justin. Any further discussion? Mike made a motion. Justin made a second. No further discussion. The ones in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Five. I believe we have covered all of the ordinances and resolutions. Is that accurate? Excellent. Right. Credit cards. According to our our mail that we put together, there will need to be a list of those of credit card. Who was at who has credit card on hand and recorded in the clerk treasurer's office.
Yep. And we have a list here. I'm just going to read. We're going to get which card. Any of the particulars about the actual card will be confidential. However, there is a Demont thing. They give a card, a credit card that will be assigned to clerk treasurer Jamie Uslak. You also have a second Demont state bank Visa credit card, which will be assigned to police chief or Tom Marshall Noel, Chief Josh Noel. Any usage will require a log to be submitted to the clerk treasurer or policy. We also have a Casey's credit card or gas card that is assigned to building inspector Brad Ludwig. We have wax cards where which are gas cards essentially, and they are going to be assigned to the following officers. We have one that's going to be assigned primarily to Chief Noel. We have a second one to Assistant Chief Sada. We have another one to Officer Green, another one to Officer Wood, another to Officer McCordick, and another to Officer Duellin. We also have three additional cards that are going to be assigned to Chief Noel. And these are for pool cards and any kind of part of time or preserve officer. So we have three of those, which are we're going to just call them vehicle pool number one, vehicle pool number two, and vehicle held on station. Any usage of these cards should be should have the clerk treasurer notify that their usage. Just that it's so he can make sure that if she sees any activity on there with. That's not supposed to be there. She will know that she could expect to use them. Other than that, that should be all the red cards and gas cards that I'm aware of. And the list has been submitted to everybody in email and physical copies.
Jamie, do we have everything listed that needs to be listed? Do we need to make a motion? We need to motion to accept this, right?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we we assign all the credit cards as as I read, but to all the specific addresses.
Justin Albright made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second though.
There being a motion in a second? Any further discussion?
Uh, any changes in these will also have to come to the town council. So these will be updated as of today. And any changes to the credit cards will need to be updated for the future council. Town council.
When you mean changes.
So if there's a new card that comes up or.
A new account now?
A new, well, no, if there's a new card that comes up, then you sometimes they'll switch the credit card numbers. I know that. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about if there's another credit card or if one of those pool cards for the wax cards is assigned to some head of an officer, then those those kind of changes will have to come forward.
Because as I say, we just replaced a card that its card was broken.
Yeah. So that's that's not what I'm referring to. As long as you have just one credit card in your possession, that's that's all.
Have we discussed the new hires as well?
Yeah. If there's any new hires or any kind of changes whatsoever, who's actually being assigned those, then it will need to come forward. The the council as well.
Jamie, in the minutes, is it something that you need to have put in the motion to redact the last four of these cards so that they're?
Last four numbers.
Last four numbers straight. The number one, that's it.
Do the numbers need to be on there at all?
I don't think so. I was just doing that for our ability.
I'll just make a copy and.
Well, for your record keeping and for all our.
But I didn't put names.
Yeah. Yeah, you can just redact any kind of, you know.
Which is black.
That or.
All right. There was a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 All those opposed? Motion passes. Five. Well, the planning commission, moving on to new business. The planning commission accepted Josh Carter's resignation from the planning commission, who was a Democrat. And his term, I believe, was up at the end of twenty twenty six. So we would need to have a posting, which I think is actually already happened. And it is a town according to ordinance, town council presidential appointment. With as soon as we start to get together and start to get some advocates, invite receiving those. We'd like to thank Josh Carter for his service. We know that he is a first responder, I believe, in another town as well as here in our community. Appreciate the time he did put in. We wish him well. So thank you. I need a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll make a motion to be accept Josh Carter's resignation. Justin.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second though.
There being a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Five. What else do we have in front of us? Mike is the H W C agreement. Do you want to kind of go through that?
Oh. So this agreement is for H W H W C or the subdivision review. Um, base two, this if only including the the changes that we made for. The patio walls.
The thing I don't see in there, Mike, is the. Yeah. If they have it on.
He said now if he didn't want this, but yeah, not attached.
I didn't get it.
Okay.
And I didn't give anything for you guys to assign either. And I did email Jamie Forbours. I think they sent that to Jason Spain, but I didn't hear from either one.
Jason Spain just wanted to do that. So what we have here is a, Mike, you had to read that.
Yeah.
So we have a subdivision review fee of five not to exceed five thousand and construction observation not to exceed eighteen. Both fees are paid according to the development agreement by the dollar. And so we will continue to work through that as we put in any pipe in the ground and any any roads, right? So Steve, were you guys need communicating directly with Randy and with with Brad and Jason? Making sure that we know inspection times are.
In in the same manner as the first base one, yes.
Okay. Randy, is there a way that works best for you, Brad, is not here or asking directly?
Uh, no, I think we can work around that. I do know we got our first team project problem in the past with all agents.
I mean, do we have an email chain of all all the parties involved that are going to communicate back? We've always kind of done a text, but what you do is since Brad's out, my best test is switch it over to an email. Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve the leases? Four.
Oh, wait. I'll do it so that you see. I'm correct.
Mike Wallace made a motion. Is there a second?
I think it's thirty.
Mike Wallace made a motion. If you're then it's made in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Steve, can you hear me or not do this?
I do not, but I heard the the B numbers. I heard in his last meeting too, and they're fine.
Okay. Want to make sure. Uh, the next thing we're going to move on to is we have the two year maintenance bond for Park Ridge base one in the amount of two hundred and sixty eight thousand three hundred. There is a letter here to guarantee from R C J J Development that they will provide this bond. Steve, how long did you say it's going to take across?
From received letter from Brett, I should have it in a matter of days. Okay. It will be effective for two years from the date of issuance.
Awesome. You, if you can, as soon as you get that, would you please have it directly mailed to the clerk treasurer? Jamie, would you be willing to let the council know?
Yeah.
Let me see.
I'm I'm going to drop it off to Jamie.
Okay. But I'm trying to see this time. We're going to try to shore up a few things.
No, I mean, I'm going to I'm going to make sure I drive it to Jamie.
There's a mechanism that we're going to set up that's going to make sure that this. Two year update doesn't come and go without us, the next council or anyone else that's involved.
It'll be us. It's two years, so it'll be us.
Well, like, what if one of us does it?
Wow. Look at it. All right. Uh, I think we should, I think we're all good.
My. And Jonathan.
Break it out.
There is a mechanism in place. Certainly. You guys just probably aren't aware to just is I need to release the performance bond. I'm also going to have to come back and release the maintenance bond.
Yeah.
So the the bonding company is your mechanism.
Right.
They are going to request that. So. Two years down the road, it does not get forgotten because the bonding company won't let you forget. So just so you know, that mechanism is always in place. And it's not just us. It's any bond. So when a bond or a letter, better anything is issued to an entity, that entity must release that document. So you guys, all what you've seen about this.
Awesome. Thank you. And it's great that we've well, we've worked with a developer like you because again, we haven't done a development in thirty years. So we appreciate your patience with us. Please pass that on to Mr. Love. And we'll be talking there. So is there a motion to approve this two year maintenance bond?
I'm making motion to accept two year maintenance bond based on the letter from the. There's no other from them. Are you going to drop a letter off game?
Right. Just a motion to accept a two year maintenance bond and the amount of the bond. You know, factor two years from the date of issuance, that that would be the simplest.
And the only thing I want to also read into the record as well, Jamie, is that this two years additional is. Is beyond our ordinance that states three years. We had three years. It should have been when the final plat was approved. So I appreciate that your company had had worked with us in order to make sure that we have a road to more gas.
And so the town council knows that. Upon my request of final plat for phase two. And that is what I'm going to bring in hand a bond as well. So at that time, I'm going to need another letter saying maintenance bond in the amount of this. The performance bond is to perform. Once you once you install everything, there's no performance left. That's why it shifts into maintenance. So.
Wait, can I get a copy of that performance bond for phase two, please?
Well, we we only need to issue a performance bond if I request final plat prior to the improvements being installed. Because the issuance of a final plat and a reclamation of that is they that signals the issuance of building permits. Until you report a plat, you can't get any permits. So up until that time, we install. So. What we will do, Jamie, is install all utilities. Everything roads, curves, the whole nine yards. So that we have, we don't need a performance bond, which is shifting the maintenance. So the only reason we had a formal spot in phase one was because we completed all the infrastructure, but the streetlights in the left station. So if I don't complete the streetlights, I would issue a performance bond for what's not completed.
Okay. Here's my thing. And I'm going to add this from where where I worked for the county. A performance bond was issued when the work started. If something would happen partway through phase two and our R C J's just up and disappeared, we are left with a phase. That is not completed and we have no bond to finish it. So now we're.
Um. I mean, that's never happened to me in all my years. I mean.
I I've seen it happen.
Yeah.
When I worked at the county, we pulled in several bonds. We pulled in several bonds.
Jamie, in 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 respect to what you're saying, I get it and I understand what you're saying. It makes sense logically what you're saying line by line. This is something that we discussed, and I will say this right now on the record. This was brought up with Brenda DeFreeze and Matt Reardon.
Okay.
This was something that I did personally discuss with them. And they went through it and explained the process as well as Steve with them and Mr. Kuiper. And this was something that they both agreed.
That we don't need.
This was, well, this was just, this was normal course of business.
Okay.
Because what they said, and and I I get where you're coming from because that was our, as well as town council. Not not speaking for the town council, but this was something that had been brought up in the past. And this was something that was talked about that day last week on a phone discussion we had for over an hour. This was a topic that came up that was explained in depth about. If logically what you're saying is yes, it would make sense that we need a performance bond. But when phase two begins. For whatever. For whatever reason. Brenda and Matt both agree that they do not issue a performance bond. The maintenance bond kicks in because they've already engaged in the performing of of the face one. It does, I I understand where you're coming from. But to reassure you, I've been reassured by.
Brendan, okay.
Brendan and Matt.
No, we don't need this.
I mean, the danger. That the danger is part of this. When you have people that have bought property. That's the danger. And then the summary is not complete. That's why if the subdivision is not complete, you have to issue that performance bond or letter of credit, whatever it is. For a hundred percent of the cost of improvements.
Right.
So the town can go back in and finish them. I see what you're saying. So a company like O R or Horton, if they were doing the development, their business plan says, I have to have final plat approval immediately upfront. In that case, they would bring a seven million dollar bond. I mean, either the bond for seven or eight million dollars, they just did it in another town. The town doesn't want to complete the subdivision, okay? But they will issue a seven, eight, ten million dollar bond to town. Which is crazy. I say then go build the subdivision. Then that's for the bond back.
But there's also a thing called a stop that some people might understand about this. And that would be a that would be. If if Lawton would not perform, the stop would come into play and there would be lawsuits. And I'm not saying that.
No, no, there would be.
I'm not using those words like for.
No. But as you, if you have a performance bond and as you finish part of the lot, you could go back and ask for reduction in the bond.
Most communities allow two reductions in a bond max. And I I usually will request one. Uh, because it's kind of a pain. You have to release the old bond, get a new bond, do this by, I mean.
As I talk surrounding communities, it seemed to be overwhelming that at before at file plat, any work that was not done on infrastructure was bonded under the performance bond. That's what happens though. Preliminary plat is it? You go dig around in sandbox. You go.
To tell you what's the reason you want to build.
This performance bond is really not there to protect the town, but really to kind of protect the, well, some of the some of the town. But as you said, those people that move into that block, they're going to get it finished.
Right. They can do those, yeah. And then have things done. Certain.
So the mechanism is that they. So the mechanism is that they have the ability, HWC review the entire subdivision as it was laid out. So they can go in, and they can, they can put in streets and roads as they want to do those. Um, that's my understanding of what it was that Jason's being said, they'll come to preliminary plat or whatever, next, the next phase is. We'll take a look at that, we'll go through, we'll approve that, they'll do it, they'll come back to us for final plat. With anything that isn't done, it is a performance bond covered with that. Once everybody wanted to build, they're gonna swatch that and switch that up with the maintenance.
Now, to Jamie's point, I, I have to apologize. I have seen where somebody has gone under, but before there was, you know, a hiccup. There were souls to somebody else.
Well.
And they, they couldn't, you know what I'm saying? Some other developer came right in.
There was a subdivision up north in Porter County that the developer went under. I think two of them went under.
Oh, jeez.
And, uh, it was left. And I do believe they had to call in, I don't know if it was a the bond had to be called in, but I know we, we've always, Porter County always had a performance bond, and then everything was done, then they would do the maintenance.
Well, when the recession hit, I recall distinctly that developers were coming in and requesting extensions of primary class. Because they couldn't afford to build a subdivision. So the town, you work with them.
Sure.
And we simply extended the primary plat. Things got better. They built a subdivision, and we moved down the business, but that, that could happen, you know, if we get into a recession again, you could get a request, it probably wouldn't be from us, but you could get a request to extend a primary plat. And like I said, everybody knows if there's downturn in the economy, it's not a big secret, so you work, you simply work with everybody, and they build a lot of it, and then everything goes back to normal, so. It's, it, it could, I would say, Jamie's point.
Awesome. So we got Mike made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, Justin.
There being a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, five oh. We're going to hear Jack in the agenda, as of right now. Uh, the, Kurt, our previous meeting had accepted and gone through and accepted of the Park Ridge list station generator lights, pulls all of the public improvements in phase one along with the uh, the electrical and the generator. Randy, I assume from thirty minutes ago, it's still your recommendation to do so?
I'm still more than buzzing.
All right.
Is that your intention, is that the motion likely?
Yes, that is my motion.
This is the lift station.
This is roads, this is all the water sewer, all of the public improvements that are, that are happening. Uh, we have a maintenance bond that can go along with this. And there'll still be a punch list, one developer to fix it on their own. When the two years gets to the end, if for some reason something happens, the town will have the the bond in order to kick in to fix, to fix any jobs. Is there a motion?
I think Mike made his, and I'll second that, Justin.
Motion a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, five oh, except the public improvement for phase one, including the lift station and the electric light. Now, I think I asked this, uh, at the, um, planning commission meeting, who's in charge of flipping over the electric? You got that, Randy?
Public, I'm trying to, I got all the information. Get an old man print that Steve gives me.
I would gladly bring it back in the yard. Yep. The other thing we have is the, uh, the accepting of the phase two, correct? That we discussed, so we're gonna do that once again. Is there anything specific we have to do that here at the town council, I'll just make a motion, just second. Making a motion, um, to assess. There you go. So we have right here to approve uh, resolution to approve the final detail plan applied for Park Ridge Phase Two. Uh, this is resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero three dash one eight dash one. Uh, RCJJ Development has submitted a final detail plan as passed in public record um, that is specific to twenty-nine lots, meaning, uh, pair uh, pair of homes, specific to, uh, to streets on the back end of the back west end of the subdivision. These are twenty-nine lots that are numbered, and the resolution will be, uh, built once allowed properly this time. Is there a motion to approve?
Isn't that what we approved already here, basically?
Here we are, because we
Yeah, this is the second.
Oh, we did, this is the second time now, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We already approved it once.
In this meeting.
We don't have to approve that portion of it again. We're good?
It's the same resolution.
Got it. Good deal, my fault. Uh, so the meeting on all the things that we needed to do, public improvement and maintenance, we didn't release the performance bond, right?
We did that.
We did, yeah, that's what we did. I believe the original.
If you had in the records, we, we accepted the maintenance bond, released the performance bond. Accepted the, we have those things.
Uh, in the
ERC, not you.
In the H U R C, yes.
So then we did, then we just approved the maintenance bond acceptance here, but not the release.
Yeah, that's the only thing we haven't done, because we did the acceptance for Park Ridge, we did the maintenance bond, performance bond, really, we didn't do this.
Motion to release the performance bond for the electrical and the station, is there a motion?
Oh, make that motion.
Uh, motion a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes, five oh. Okay. Steve, I think you approved, and reapproved, approved all of it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fairly pleased with the approvals that we released. The resolutions approved, the performance bond is released, and the maintenance bond is accepted.
Yes.
Those, those were the prime, the, the items.
Yeah, that's, that's as much as I'm talking about it, and it will take you just a little while.
Yeah, I, I
only mistake.
Oh, I, I will have that. Anything is possible for you.
Okay. So we have then in front of us, the next thing is the HRC had requested help of paying five thousand dollars of the RSTI payment to sort of free up money in order to support a public a public event. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? There being no motion when this fails. Moving on to seasonal park time health, Randy?
Yeah, the street permits, ask, did you bring on one seasonal park time, uh, more beautification, more, more helping out parks, uh, the added watering, and, uh, all the, uh, beautifying projects that we will be doing this summer.
This is definitely what asked for earlier, right?
Yeah, yeah, a little bit more technical G I S, this is just beautifying.
And this is a college kid as well?
Could be, yes.
Okay.
And I think we've done this in the past, where we
Yes, we've done it, we managed, assessed, asked, compared.
We've redefined this a little bit, there was two that were doing maintenance, now one of these kids will likely be in the G I S. Go ahead. Paying for, uh,
uh, this will be M V H park time.
Seasonal park time.
And this is fifteen an hour as well?
Yes.
So we're thinking
For about ten weeks, about that.
Yeah, same, same period.
Mike, is this a motion?
My motion, my recommendation and my motion.
Is there a second? Okay, Justin. There's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes, five oh. Uh, okay, have they, on March contract for CCMV inspection, ready?
Yes, uh, I think from the workshop, I knew that Kaiser did reduce it to eight grand, uh, so.
Yes.
So, uh, this increase is because of all the drainage added in the CCMG. So.
There was originally one underground.
There was originally sixty, and then it went to a hundred, they proposed a hundred, and he cut it to eighty.
I appreciate everyone, uh, pushing a little bit back on these things, it's our jobs, council to question things, and then I also appreciate Randy going back and looking at to get that. Mike, you said your motion?
This is my motion.
I didn't put these words in the call, but because you're the liaison to the public works. There was a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mike made the motion, Timmy seconded it, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, motion passes, five oh. Jamie, did you receive this copy from, uh, center of the HRC meeting? That was for the overlapping districts, or what they do with their T F, is it in the records, is that something?
I don't believe I received that.
I'm going to set this aside. My public.
Oh, maybe we can help.
Mister, of, of, the, sorry, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you.
You should have gone to safety one for doing it.
I should be fast, you have to ask him. So I appreciate it. I don't see anything else that is in front of us that we have to do, other than the reports and the document. Is there anything that I missed? Randy?
I don't believe so.
So we'll go over reports, all the works.
Today was a big day, we've got, uh, three six of bike in, now to the work project, the flats. It's just been moving a little bit faster tomorrow, they're setting up today, we have two crews tomorrow, uh, there'll be some small closings, uh, currently on Chicago between Route Eight and Rosemary's closed, uh, anticipate that not open back up on Thursday. They will be boring, uh, on Route Eight from Quincy to Norma, uh, starting tomorrow with the, uh, wrap up Thursday. So that project is, uh, moving right along. I am still working on your report, doing groundbreaking ceremony, uh, right now, March is tied up, it looks like we're gonna be in April, I think so, fine, but we'll get it taken care of. Uh, the good news, we were awarded the CCMG for twenty twenty-five, phase two. It's good news, bad news, um. With the governor, they're really pushing these, we have to have this contract signed by Joe Hyde sixth. So we're gonna have to start moving forward on betting, uh, having March give me a timeline, looks like we're gonna be able to beat that, so uh, I will look at that tomorrow, we'll get the ball rolling on that as well.
Can you give a brief overview as to what we're gonna be doing with the phase two?
No, I do, I understand, uh, let me think, okay.
What's the, what's the gas that you want to hold just a little up there?
No, 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 we're doing Quincy base, and there's the, Quincy base, another street. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna pull back, all right?
This is gonna, but the CCMG here is going to be able to get into the phase two portion of the snake blast.
Yeah, so we're gonna follow, just like we do phase one, so, uh, Chicago Roseberry's getting done now, uh, they'll have drainage and streets behind it. Uh, this will, all drainage and streets on the mixed rear force, uh, roads, and then we'll be one last final phase three, where we get to it to wrap up the entire snake blast. The hall, water, streets, and storm, so.
So this is gonna come in after we do all the infrastructure, then it'll come in paved, and then
There, there's a very strong chance that we will have to do this in the calendar year twenty twenty-five. I know, but I was, when we applied for this, we were kind of hoping we had approved it, and maybe do it next spring, just because of the coordination of you've got Grimmer doing the water line, you've got a race rider doing track one, now you're bringing in the surgery contractor, and then you've got air truck, it's all three, uh, how long a conversation with that Kaiser, it is, or this, we'll figure it out, it will be challenging. Um, but.
How much, I mean, if we do, and if anything does work out, how
How many dollars is going to be awarded?
Well, no, no, how much, uh, whoa, that's awesome, uh, I don't know what that meant by that, but, uh, how much, uh, snake blasts, if all three of those things work out for twenty twenty-five, and we got a snake blast done with about twenty percent, twenty-five?
Oh, no, no, it'd be more than eighty percent.
Eighty percent, you're on by the end of this year, that's
And then we'll take another phase of CCMG to
To wrap it up, yes.
I'm in the process of doing, um, additional appropriations. So the money that we did not use last year from rainy day, local roads and streets, um, riverboat that we normally use for paving, that will go towards this year, so I'm in the process of getting that, it will be at the April fourth.
Okay.
Excellent. This is a great job, thank you very much. Just saying, anything else?
Yeah, last thing I want to remind, uh, April twenty-first, you may second, we'll be
Uh, Justin?
Mark's part.
Just one item, um, Mary Jane filed her application, uh, for grant money with the Indiana Arts Commission. Um, the notification on that one is in July. Um, we now have two applications out. The other one's with Porter County Community Foundation. And these are both grants that were, like, were to do the mural that's going to be installed on retaining, well, crossing all grains, we're trying to get as much grant money to pay for the project as we can. So fingers crossed, we'll get at least one of them.
Because we've already got some on the floor, right?
We already got five thousand. It was from Indian Avenue.
And the overall cost of the project was estimated somewhere about fifteen grand.
Uh, somewhere around fifteen to seventeen. Just depends. So hopefully we can get one of those. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you for filing for the grants.
You're welcome.
Ben, can you hear that? Do you hear how much they're getting the, uh, paint done for? Do we need to
Yeah, a lot of people got paid, it's a, it's a girl, I was asking, do we even have our department to sit down with you guys for a couple? Yeah, you're right. Do you need any engineering done on that wall?
Wow, we're shit out there, Mike. I feel terrible, I, I, I was good, it sounds great, I know the spirits are gonna show up on the Zoom meeting, but they're here, all right? That's all, then. All right, another thank you. All right, we have nothing to, do we have anything from the building, Mark?
Uh, well, is, uh, he's getting back to work, so the delay that we had for the last month is, uh, is starting to continue on, uh, permits are starting to go back out, um, he's trying to catch back up, so.
Mike, you mind writing that there were sixty-three permits issued based on the park, on, uh, the plan?
I believe it was sixty-three, yes. It was the sixties.
Somewhere in that area, so they're building, something I wanted to add, was driving through their top some residents today. I s, I think I counted twelve or thirteen kids under the age of five, their parents later there, which is gonna be a wonderful thing for our school, because we had a school meeting, they had a school meeting, state of the school, the mixed design, and they currently stated that that school corporation still has five hundred and fifty spots that they can handle. So it has under a thousand kids, and it's five hundred and fifty spots that it could fill. And seventy-two hundred dollars, uh, kid currently, that's quite a bit of money that can be collected by our school. Uh, we have teachers that want to work, we've got space that you want to be, that needs to be filled, so the more responsible development we can have, the better, but it looks like the sixty-three homes are starting to, uh, to Uh, I believe Jeff, Mr. Brooks, superintendent, said there was ten kids that had already been in the school just in this last year, so that's been building, nothing?
Nothing else we're building.
Police?
Uh, just my monthly report. The month of February, the police department conducted a hundred and thirty-one traffic stops. We answered a hundred and two calls of service, out of that, forty-one citations were issued, twelve misdemeanor arrests and five felony charges. We've answered a hundred and two calls of service, out of that, forty-one citations were issued, twelve misdemeanor arrests, and five felony charges. We have the breakdown of the calls to service, uh, nothing out of the ordinary vehicle report, and unbridled.
Excellent, redevelopment, Jim?
I believe it's all gonna be still.
Mike, everybody, public works, parts department, building department, police department, redevelopment. Uh, I do have one announcement, uh, I sent this out, and, and quite a few responses from, from everyone, did not receive responses back, so I'm gonna make sure the public is aware of this. Uh, beginning April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, through May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, answer builders willing intermittently, if you're working on construction of the frontage improvements for the driveway curb and gutter and stormwater turnouts related to the new dollar, the D G market, located at eight sixty-six South State Road Two, about five hundred feet from the highway. Will be affected to flag operation, to control traffic and provide safe semi-truck will be permitted in the construction zone. So they don't know exactly what, based on weather, based on construction times, um, I believe that the police responded, you said this. Uh, Chief Branchman said that he had heard about it, Randy said he heard about it, I believe all of us have as well, so.
Justin.
Oh, jeez. I have no idea what that happened. I don't know, I'm just kidding, bud, sorry, guys.
That's all right.
Not sure how that happened.
Uh, just for the record, it wasn't recorded, I just read the fact that the, uh, D G market is going to be, uh, intermittently interrupting traffic, it's flaggers to do the the street side improvements from April fourteenth or May thirtieth, and obviously will not be all of that time, or even close to that amount of time, but that is our petition to state. All of the department heads, including the police, public works, as well as the fire department, have been notified. Is there any other announcements from the council? Are there any other announcements from anyone else? Uh, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, the council is working with the school government class, hopefully next, the next month's meeting. Um, if they can work this whole thing out, they will be coming here to, uh, to view how it is to be handled ourselves, so wear your, your best tuxedos.
We're gonna use no home any kids.
We absolutely will. And once you have that, we will, uh, we will pass that on and make sure that we have room and capacity in this room. Uh, we'll also have a short question and answer, not short, uh, a question and answer session afterwards, see what happens. So, uh, we probably, our recommendation is that, how we need to do that as a public, uh, do we just continue to roll it, do we have it separate, what do you think?
I would think it would not be the same, but next.
Yeah, I mean, minors, but, I mean.
Well, contemplate how.
Yeah, I can't answer that question right now.
Okay. Contemplate how we should do that.
Are they gonna give us our questions first, they, they don't?
No, nah, come on, we're in, come in hot.
Coming in hot?
Coming in hot. Who knows, we'll see, maybe it could be two people, maybe it could be thirty people, see what happens, we've had a full, full room in the past, see what happens. So if there are no other comments, I'm going to read the, uh, the document, and we all, yes.
I did call, uh, Unit Code, City Plus, whatever you want to call them now, and they do have that area that she said we can upload stuff, and there's no cost.
There's no cost. So we could go paperless, there's no cost.
It's on a unit code.
Well, there'd be no cost except for the, you know, the electronics to do some of these things.
Well, that's gonna be either way.
Absolutely, absolutely. So we can discuss that at workshop next time, is that okay?
Yeah, no, definitely.
Uh, Mike or Soder, do you wanna, since we have that, and we, do we wanna contemplate it, do we wanna let this, let the representative know?
Well, I haven't talked to him, so I thought maybe we could try this other way, then if it doesn't work, you can try another.
Yeah, I just paid us a sales revenue, not to, not to your back from a company that you presented to, you know, what's, what's happening.
Well, you said ninety days. Oh, I said a week.
Okay. Awesome.
Is that, maybe quote something that?
We already have.
We already have.
Yes, that does our website, and I think.
It is where you go to the minutes on our website. There will be, the way it was done before, forgive me if I'm wrong, there is a agenda column, there is a minutes column, there is a video column, there will likely be a document. That will not be published, we probably have to.
I see, will that contact you if someone wants to go on and look at that?
Yes, Kelly will help you.
Okay.
All of it is a P P I.
You can cancel. Why is that?
All right, uh, let's read the documents of the dispersals, so we have a total of three hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents, we have transfers of a hundred and seven hundred thousand one dollars and sixteen cents. We're in net of two hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-one cents. Is there a motion to approve the document?
Only a motion to approve the document, as, as ready to.
Thank you, there is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, Tammy.
Soder has made a motion, Tammy's made a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. We've got this month coming up ahead, good luck to you, Randy. I'm certainly glad, but you're not going to be relaxing very much, I appreciate all of that, I appreciate all the departments, all of the commissions. Everyone, this is gonna be a busy summer here in here. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second, Justin.
All those in favor? Uh, all those opposed, go to the fastest button. And we make eight nineteen.